We didn't pray tonight as a group. I'm sorry, everyone. Fail on my part.
You could have too. Any one of you.
Anything else you'd like to pray before? Lord, thank you for tonight. Help us to be wise. Amen.
Amen.
There you go.
Much chance for a water? Do you need a highlighter? I like to get it out of there. Unless you were using. Okay. I don't have time to highlight, but we'll do it. Okay. So as soon as we get the high sign, folks, we'll get started. Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Tonight is July 8, 2021, and welcome to the city of Xenia. Before we begin, we will have an invocation by Mr. Kyle Kettering from All About Xenia. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And he'll come to the podium and also ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Mayor Sarah Mays tonight. Thank you.
Blessed are you, Lord our God, King of the universe, who is good and does good. We thank you, Father, for the concept of governance. And we thank you, Father, that throughout our lives, we have experienced comparatively very good governance compared to the history of the world. Thank you, dear God. Our wisdom is your wisdom, and we pray tonight for the council members that they will experience your wisdom. We ask, dear God, that there would be no prejudices or prejudgments tonight, that the council members would operate with clear minds and open minds as they deliberate and hear from the citizens. We ask, dear God, that there also may not be any favoring of the rich to the detriment of the poor, or favoring of the poor to the detriment of the rich, but that there would be equality and fraternity and good-heartedness in relation to the decisions that are made, and that there would be an even-handedness of representing the laws of this country and the charter of the city of Xenia. We thank you, dear God, for your goodness to us. Beshemishua. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kettering. Thank you, Mayor Mays. At this time, I will call our meeting to order and ask for a roll call. Please.
Vice President Dean here. Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilwoman Brannon?
Here.
Councilwoman Oshel?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes from the June 24, 2021 regular meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Scrivens.
Ball seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Brannon. Do we have any additions, corrections, or discussion regarding the minutes before us?
Just wanted to thank Councilwoman Oshel for excusing me. I was at camp with my kids. I try very hard not to miss council meetings, but they needed another counselor, and I know we always say family first. I just wanted to let the public know that I was at camp. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. See no other comments regarding the minutes. I will ask for a roll call to accept. Please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Oshel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Abstain.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the slots slated for special presentations. At this time, I will ask Ms. Marty Hyde from Congressman Turner's office to come to the podium and prepare your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Marty Heidi, and I am Green County Outreach for Congressman Mike Turner, and it's really great to be out and about and before council tonight. I come periodically and give public service information that is beneficial to you as council members and the community. So my ask tonight is for you to hear my words and spread the word about the COVID funeral assistance program that is in existence right now. FEMA is the federal agency that is actually running the program. It became a part of the American Rescue Plan in December legislation of 2020, and right now, it started April of 2021, and you apply by phone, and anybody that paid for a funeral related to COVID-19 can get up to $9,000 reimbursement. You have receipts that you can present. The process is fairly easy. I passed out this flyer, and it's a phone call that you start with, with FEMA. Be patient. It might be busy, but you apply by phone, and then they tell you after you apply what to do next. It takes about two and a half months to get your reimbursement, but you gather up all your receipts. I will say that if the death certificate does not say specifically COVID-19, you can amend that death certificate, or if it happened before May of 2020, you get just a medical examiner's statement that you can attach, because at that point, they weren't real sure that COVID was, you know, the cause. This is a hard topic for me to talk about, because we lost so many people. But, excuse me, but I want to tell you, get the community involved here, because this is important. People that I go, I go to council meetings and trustee meetings, and people don't know about this. And Congressman Turner sent a mass mailing out to churches and funeral homes, because we figured that that was kind of a basis for people that would know. So as community members, make sure you pass it out. Excuse me. I'm sorry. There are frequently asked questions. If you have questions, this is open-ended. And so far, in the state of Ohio, the applications are 7,500 so far, to a total of $13 million. And so far, 2,000 of those applications have been approved. So this is a big deal. This is nationwide, and that's just the Ohio numbers. It's unended, I suppose, until the money runs out, but the recommendation is to get applied. If you know someone, have them apply. Questions?
How hard is it to amend the death certificate? I heard that was an arduous process.
Well, it could be, and not knowing the process for that, I think you need to first go to the medical examiner that issued the death certificate and find out, you know, the process. I'm sure there's a process to do it, and they can go back. I've had some people call and say that they contacted the medical examiner and got the letter and got the death certificate amended. So it can be done. I don't know about the length of time it takes. I know the medical examiner is probably a busy person, but I know that it can be done.
Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Any other questions for Ms. Heidi?
No. I think the other place for us in our city was the nursing home and assisted living homes, and we'll get some copies of these out to the directors there, because...
Absolutely. That's a good suggestion.
I think that's where we had a majority of our folks pass away from COVID.
Okay.
Over in the city.
I'll make sure that we get those sent, too. That's a good, that's a good idea.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Ms. Heidi, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I know you have addressed council before in the past. We appreciate your time. Thank you for coming tonight.
You're very welcome.
For the information that you gave us.
It's good to see all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, next on our agenda is the opportunity for audience comments. Before we begin, I do want to let those that are watching, those in the audience, know it has always, and not just tonight, it has always been the policy of council, to allow anyone to speak, to come to the podium, give us your name and address, limit your comments to two to three minutes. Tonight, several people have signed in, so what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to have our city clerk actually call you up. If, no panic, if you did not have the opportunity to sign in and would still like to speak, you have your opportunity to come to the podium one time. You can do that at the end. Just keep in mind, this is the city of hospitality. As your council, we are elected to represent you. We are elected to listen to you and to act. However, council does not engage during audience comments, so there will not be a debate or discussion going on during audience comments. After, audience comments later tonight, under council comments, council members may elect the opportunity to discuss what you're talking about tonight. So at this time, we will go ahead and start with audience comments, and then at the end, I do have a statement from the city, which I'll wait. So feel free to call our first guest, please.
My name is Thomas Sizemore, and glad to meet you all. I've been around here about 10 years, and I live by Lexington Park. And the park is a nice place, okay? Maybe some of yous don't think it's sad, but I've never understood how back in the old days, you had bathrooms up there, you had it all looking nice. Now it's just to the bottom, as far as no restrooms, no places to sit, stuff like that. Everybody needs to wake up. In the garden areas, I've got seven of them, okay? That's seven spots. And I have friends that's with me on them, and everybody needs to see that that's actual a park, and it's got a lot of history with Xenia. I've talked to people that's 80, 90 years old, and back in the day, they used to play sports up there, softball, baseball, and stuff like that. Man, I don't, you okay? Okay. But I don't understand why everything is changing up there. You don't have a restroom for people, okay? Actually, a lot of people go up there with the playground and stuff, and I've seen a lot of people drive by, and it's, you know, with me being actually white, you can notice people different color. And I'm like, okay, and they're seeing what the park is, and it's a good park, but it seems like you just letting it go, and then just go back with stimulants. Stimulants money. I go up to Shawnee, I'm seeing a lot of money being spent up there for repairs and stuff. It is not, not a bad thing. I go up there fishing, I go up, just walk around, but you just need to take and put money in these parks where a lot of people have, you know, to communicate and stuff. And benches, you know, just put some benches in, put the rest of that parking lot, and anytime you see everyone sitting, just go through the park, you don't have to stop. You'll see me in my garden, working, okay? Doing, and all that stuff pretty much goes back to the community, okay? Food banks, people, and elderly people. And it's not a color thing. It's everybody. And I see a lot...
Mr. Sizemore, if you could, we're at three, a little over three minutes, so I'll give you another minute just to wrap up if you're ready, okay?
One minute. Okay. But just wake up. Put some money in that park. Put benches, put things that look decent, a bathroom at least. You got little kids that have to go, and these are not, these are people on this side of town everywhere, east, west, north, south. Everybody's supposed to be together. Do it. That's my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sizemore. Appreciate that. Ms. Johnson, who's next?
Hi. My name is Rodrick Smith. My address is L. 15090 Smarter Street, Xenia, Ohio.
Could you speak good, please, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm a businessman here in Xenia, Roddy's Construction LLC. I was racially profiled at Lexington Park, and I'm glad that he brought this up. Our park does need restrooms. You know, we got men, women, and children that are using the bathroom outside by trees, right? So on that end, I also would like to mention this. I go to the park, I do Bible studies. I teach people the Bible, okay? We have no place of shelter that is closer to the parking lot, okay? So when we have people there, they're not able to make it all the way down to the shelters to hear this Bible study, okay? So as far as what Mr. Thomas was saying, we do need bleachers. We do need playground equipment, new playground equipment, not the playground equipment that was retired from Shawnee Park. You see what I'm saying? We need, we need stuff for our children to come outside and play on. They shouldn't have to go to any other community. That park is a park, when I was a child, where you held baseball games. The community was mixed. There was white and black that played on softball teams down there, okay? So we need more equipment, new equipment, new restrooms, immediately. And as far as the policing, they shouldn't profile individuals coming out of that place. Like I said, I'm a, I'm a prominent business owner. I pay my taxes. There was no reason for me to be assumed a drug dealer because I'm at the park. And I just advise that we take action and that we hold our police and our law enforcement accountable for the profiling. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Johnson, who's next, please?
Hello. How is everyone tonight?
Thank you.
I also am here speaking about Lexington Park. My children don't even want to go up there because they don't have anything to do. They have to go back and forth. I live on Second Street. They have to cross Main Street so they can come back home to use the bathroom, or because they're thirsty, because the only spigot that's up there is for the garden. I go up there because that's where I've been. I go up there and I read and I meditate. So when I hear people like, well, what are you doing up there anyway? It's what I know. And when you learn different from people and you expect different from people, you also have to put in the work with the people. You can't look back at us and watch us and wonder why they behave the way they behave. When you come in and you treat them a certain way, when, when someone comes at you, you get a little defensive, especially when you're not doing anything. So what we're asking is for the same respect that we give, where we're not causing trouble. You don't, you don't have police calls that, that come up there frequently. You don't have people up there fighting. You don't, that's not what's happening up there. But the kids can't even be comfortable to play at the park because they barely have equipment, and then the community has to come together and put their nets up for basketball courts, right? We had to come and ask for trash cans. We don't even have a dumpster up there. So when people are like, well, you leave it this way, where do you want them to put it? Where do you want them to put their trash? You leave it on the ground like you leave us on the ground. That's not fair. When we're trying to make a change, you have to change along with us, and that's all that we're asking. We're asking you to hold that your officers who are not doing their job accountable, because you do have some officers who are out there trying to make a difference. But we're just saying, see the ones who aren't, and hold them accountable for it. That's all. Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson, who's next, please?
Mario Coffrin? That's the last person I have.
Okay. Sure.
Didn't hear his name.
Mario Coffrin?
My name is Mario Coffrin. Coffrin Auto Sales LLC on 320 Dayton Avenue here in Xenia. I'm also a real estate agent for the Northern White Group here in town. I'm here, too, talking about Lexington Park. I happen to be there today that the police did what they did. We were told the park was closed because they were doing an investigation. I'm also educated in the law, have a degree in criminal justice, so what I seen that day is not fair. Period, dot, just cut and dry. I watched the police break into two vehicles that day without any, any permission whatsoever. And then when the complaints went to the city to complain about what happened, basically were told by the Xenia Police Department that they weren't there, told by the Green County Sheriff's Office that they weren't there. So someone was trying to hide something. I'm sorry, I'm a little shaken up because I'm, I'm really upset about it. Rod Smith, a very upstanding person in our community. I don't live in Eastland no more. I recently moved my family to Washington Township. I was living right here behind the police station on 129 Park Drive. It's unfair, you know? Living across the street from Shawnee Park, watching the amenities that those kids get to take advantage of every day, and then driving to the park, and I frequent the park every day. I don't do anything illegal. I am a business owner here. So when I put a complaint on Facebook and people attack you saying, well, what's people doing at the park? Like, we're really talking about people visiting the park. We have rights, too. If you have a group of black people gathered, we're not doing anything wrong, you know? This guy gives Bible studies up there to people who want to listen to the Bible. Not saying nothing illegal happens at the park, but at that time, nothing illegal was taking place. And when you're, when you're doing community policing, you should have the courtesy to say, hey, what are you doing up here? If a person responds to you, hey, I'm giving Bible study, or whatever the reason is, to blatantly call them drug dealers, bring dogs to their cars, that, that's a gross abuse of power, in my opinion. Don't know all the laws of what the task force are able to do, but what I see, you know, how much money went into that airplane patrol? Because I read the transcripts from the police's surveillance on just the one day. We couldn't get the other two days, but reading the transcripts, usually it was airplanes, 52 traffic stops, less than like $1,000 worth of street drugs. And I can guarantee 80% of the stops came out of the Eastland. So I just want to know, did that warrant that much policing? And what's going to be done about taxpayer dollars being spent in that nature? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is all we had signed up. However, if you're in the audience tonight, yes, you'll just need to give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Donald Dominic. I live 10th Ave., Superior Avenue, that's in Dayton, Ohio. And we came up to support Mr. Smith. I'm one of the leaders of the Black Panther Party in Dayton. We came to the rally last week in support of the family after they called us up. And so we're just here to, to give our support to this family, to look for some solutions. I actually participated in police reform in Dayton over the last six months, and I think, I don't know what you guys are doing on police reform, but we had a real productive six months. We got a lot of things done, body cams and stuff like that. And so I just came basically to encourage the community in that direction. You know, I've been up here a lot over the years. I'm 60 now. I used to come to Wilberforce. This has always been a diverse community, and I think that we have to continue to be sensitive about the needs of everybody in the community, especially with the, with the current climate in America right now. And hopefully, if the family is willing, we can get together and do something proactive, maybe at Lexington Park, if you guys would like to do that, if the family would agree. And so, yeah, we're just here to support the family, to validate their complaint, and hopefully you guys will be in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come to the podium?
Hello. My name is Carlos Buford. I'm also out of Dayton, Ohio. I'm the founder of Black Lives Matter Dayton, and I'm also in support of not only you guys as councilmen and mayor, I'm also in support of this family. I came out here and walked the parks with them, and I definitely would like to see some things on their behalf and you all's behalf as how you bring about equity, okay? I'm not sure if they have to work with the parks and recreation, but at some point, there does need to be some type of equity when it comes to the Lexington Park. I drove up in there myself, and I did not realize by the testimony of the aforementioned, they actually said that there were children, strangers that are brought from another park to Lexington Park, you know, used. I don't know about you all, but when I buy a new car, I want a new car. I want something that I can claim as my own. And I'm pretty sure their children would like to have something that maybe everybody don't always have. And so it's only best, it's only right that they get that same equity when it comes to parks and recreation. And I'm willing to give some ideas. I've done that with my own city council just recently. And I think sometimes we have to look at what we are really doing as a community, okay? And just like Donald said, the atmosphere is thick with racism, discrimination, and from what I gather from the votes that comes in here to this Green County, 60% of the votes went to Trump, okay? We don't want that type of atmosphere if that's not the atmosphere that's going to be for everybody, okay? We want it to be for everyone. So I think it's only good that we all ask that one question, where do we go from here? And if we're not willing to sit down at the table and be honest with each other and see what's really out here and see what's wrong and what's not right, then we're not doing our jobs, not only as councilmen and mayor, but also as citizens, not only Xenia, but also Dayton. So I, I, I hope that you are willing to come to the table, and I think there's some American Act for the COVID, you know, the Rescue Plan Act or whatever, okay? That's a lot of millions of dollars coming to these cities. Let's be honest and be real. Get back to the Lexington Park. That park needs a total overhaul. Everything, a total overhaul. And you should be willing to do that because there is many predominantly black people in that neighborhood, and they would like to say something that they could call themselves, call it their own as well. And so you want to invite also others from Shawnee Park to come to that park as well. So let's, let's be honest and be real. When we have this conversation, when we get back to our respective homes and corners, okay? It's all about equity. Let's do right by the people, because when you do right by the people, you do right by yourselves and your families as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time?
I'd just like to agree with you.
All right. Thank you. All right. And may I, not to call you out, that just walked in, if you would like to address city council, right now we're under audience comments. This would be your opportunity to do that.
Talk about me?
No, that lady that just walked in. I'm sorry. I'm assuming you came tonight to talk to council.
I did.
If you could just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ida Hawkins. I live at 674 Smith Avenue. My son is Rodrick Smith. My concerns are there, there's laws that have been broken by the law. And I don't know if you understand that. And I've had, had this issue with three sons, raising them in this town that we love. We've been here generations. My grand... My grand, great grandmother had property in Wilberforce that she has helped the community with. And I just find it so difficult to believe that our children have to go through this. There's nowhere for them to play. There's nothing for them. We didn't grow up like that. We were friends to the police. They were our friends. They didn't accuse us of things that we didn't do. They had enough information to go and make it right and give these people chances. It's just not fair. It's not fair what they're doing to our community. We have nothing, nothing in that park for the kids. Where's, where's their fun? Where do they go? What do they do? And that, I mean, right now, that's really all I have to say, is think of the children. Stop illegally putting their parents in jail, making things up on them. It's not right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, at this time, I will close the audience comments portion of our meeting. I do have a couple, um, points. I will just go ahead and, uh, read these off. Okay, um, I will read these off. I, I did want to mention, uh, these are some points that, uh, our city has given us because tonight I see a lot of people here and we really appreciate that. We are here as a council. We want feedback. Every meeting, we wish we had this many people. Most of the time, we're lucky to have one or two people. Most of the time, we have no audience comments. And now that things have opened up and you don't have to just email, uh, continue to come to our meetings because we, we do want this, um, discussion. But before I read these, these points, if any of you would care, if you would go back about two or three meetings, our council has actually talked about Lexington Park on more than one occasion. As a council body, the mayor and council has visited Lexington Park, uh, on an occasion. Uh, and we have discussed that as a priority in our budget, uh, using, um, possible money from the Affordable Cares Act. Councilman Urschel and I have both been to Lexington Park many times. Um, the mayor and the rest of the council has also visited that. So we understand your concerns and, uh, we are looking for the money to infuse into Lexington Park, um, to help bring it back up. And, uh, we appreciate those comments. The, the other on, uh, policing, um, I do want to let everyone know that Sergeant Lane from the police department, um, has an open door policy and has invited anyone to reach out to him to discuss the incidences that happened, um, on, uh, the task force. So, uh, just a few things that has been brought to my attention. Operation Blue Light, um, is a statewide anti-narcotics initiative, um, that local law enforcement did participate in. These efforts have come in direct response from the city council to address drug trafficking in our community. As council members, we are constantly receiving emails, uh, and complaints in our community about the rise in drug use. And we have brought this to the city manager's attention numerous times, uh, trying to feel we can take care of this the best we can with the resources that we have. Locally, Xenia PD, Beaver Creek PD, Green County Sheriff's Office and the ACE Task Force participated in enforcement details on June 22nd and June 23rd. Those details were conducted and centered on locations throughout Xenia, all of which were known as possibility for drug trafficking. During this initiative, law enforcement conducted 52 traffic stops, resulting in confiscation of 1.8 grams of cocaine, 12.3 grams of crack, 33.1 grams of marijuana, eight THC vape cartridges and two handguns that were illegally possessed. Seven of those 52 stops occurred in the East End. Not 52, seven. So overall felony charges were filed against two individuals. Those are pending and have been referred to the prosecutor. Six people were arrested on warrants. But tonight, while you're here, we want you to know that your city leadership is sensitive to the concerns of residents who may feel that law enforcement operations were misapplied. And our city encourages a community dialogue on tough issues to promote a small, a strong hometown environment. And again, that's why I mentioned, this is a city of hospitality. We're all neighbors. It is our policy of the city of Xenia that a fundamental value we hold are the civil liberties of individuals and those are not to be infringed upon and that personal privacy is to be respected. It is the responsibility of our city to respond to citizens' demands for safety and residential well-being while being proactively addressing drug trafficking and drug use. So our city will seek to strive a proper balance in these things and we will continue to remain open to further conversation. So like I said before, if you would like to discuss this in more detail, our police department is open to listening. Um, our council is here to listen, um, and our city manager is available to listen to your concerns as well. Thank you very much. We will move on to old business. Our first item is ordinance 2021-16. This is a second reading and this is accepting the annexation of 2.29 acres of land at 800 Hedges Road in Xenia Township to the city of Xenia. And this is introduced by Councilman Scrivens at our last meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for passage. I'd like to see Xenia grow at least by another, let's see, how much is 2.29 acres?
Thank you. All right. Move for passage by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any discussion or comments regarding ordinance 2021-16? Mr. Duke? I'm sorry, sir. Audience portion is closed now. Thank you though. All right. Mr. Duke, roll call?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brayden?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is Resolution 2021- letter Z. This is also a second reading. This is approving the estate of Charles Strasburg's renewal application for a placement of 32.65 acres of land located at 817 Upper Belbrook Road, um, in a CAUV agricultural district, introduced by Councilman Brayden at our last meeting.
I'd like to move for passage, Mr. President.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilman Brayden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Urschel. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Scrivens.
Just for the residents who don't know what a CAUV is, it's a current agricultural use valuation. You evaluate land by how it's used. And this particular parcel of land is evaluated as an agricultural land, as not a residential. So the taxing structure would be a bit different. That's why they're, uh, using it as an agricultural. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens for pointing that out. Any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Duke, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brayden?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is public hearing. Our first and only public hearing tonight is on Resolution 2021- letter BB. This is a second reading. This is adopting the 2022 tax budget for the city of Xenia and authorizing the finance director to submit it to Green County Auditor. This was introduced by the vice president at our pre, last meeting.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd like to move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by the vice president. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. At this time, I will open the public hearing regarding Resolution 2021- BB and ask for anyone that would like to come speaking on behalf of the tax budget to come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one come forward on the tax budget, anyone might like to come up and speak against the 2022 tax budget? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and introduce any other additional comments from my colleagues at this time. Not seeing anyone. So at this time, we have a motion and a second to adopt the tax budget. I'll ask Mr. Duke for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brayden?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just want to let everybody know what a tax budget is. You may not know, but, uh, this particular tax budget does not authorize us to allocate any funding, uh, but it's a step in the development of our actual operating budget. So it's just a guidance document, so, so you'll know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scrivens. All right, next is new business. First item under new business is Resolution 2021- letter CC titled an emergency. This is supporting the Connect Green Initiative and authorizing the city of Xenia's participation in the joint federal raise grant application and declaring an emergency. At this time, Mr. City Manager, would you care to explain?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, the seating staff is presenting counsel with the recommendation to approve a resolution, again, as an emergency, uh, supporting a countywide initiative to expand our road class trail system and simultaneously improve some, uh, transportation, uh, concerns associated with one of our busiest commercial areas in the city. Uh, staff has been collaborating with representatives from around the county, various jurisdictions, including, uh, county engineer's office and, and, and planning, um, to develop the green master trails plan. This is a collaborative plan seeking to sustain existing trail system infrastructure and expand the system in ways that promote quality of life and, and economic, uh, growth. Uh, one initiative that has taken root from the effort is the Connect Green Initiative. Uh, this initiative would promote and seek funding for, uh, three trail connection projects in Green County. Uh, your agenda report details these, but I want to draw, uh, specific attention, um, to the, um, Reach Xenia Trail Project component. This project would seek to link two segments of our community divided by the US 35 Expressway, specifically connecting the Progress Drive Bike Path with Colorado Drive via a new roadside path and ultimately connect to the heavily used Little Miami Scenic Trail. Uh, this would be facilitated through, uh, proposed, uh, trails and on-street bike facilities through Arrowhead and Sterling Green neighborhoods. The project would include widening the existing Upper Belbrook Road overpass over US 35 to accommodate a roadside trail and a third travel lane, uh, which, uh, we think is particularly beneficial given the increased traffic in that area. So this obviously provides improvements for safety for vehicular, bicycles, as well as pedestrian travel. If you live in that area or frequent that area, you will see juveniles crossing that bridge on foot, uh, multiple times per day, and we've been, uh, very concerned about that for a long, for a long time. Um, this is an identified need in our explains, so it's been, it's been out there for a number of years that we need a, a long-term fix for this. Um, and so, uh, as a priority concern for safety, we want to find a solution. Uh, the estimated cost for this comprehensive fix is just over $4.9 million, which is obviously not money that we have available in budget. However, um, the proposed Green Initiative partners included very smaller jurisdictions impacted by the proposed projects, as well as the county engineer, uh, recommending a joint application for grant funding through a new program known as the Raise Grant, a Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. The grant program provides funding option for a 100% grant, you can't get a better deal than that, um, that would cover the entire cost of that initiative. So, uh, staff inclusive of our planning, engineering folks have worked with the county counterparts to develop project scope in hopes that, uh, this project could be, uh, applied for and potentially awarded, uh, and that would be a real blessing for our community. So this evening, we are, uh, requesting, uh, that council adopt Resolution 2021 CC in support of these initiatives and authorize us to apply for that grant. Uh, we're asking that this be approved as an emergency because that grant application deadline, uh, is right on our doorstep. I think it's the 12th of July. So in order for us to submit that application, all the partnering jurisdictions have to have that resolution of support and so we would need that as an emergency. So we would certainly entertain any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, so Yellow Springs and Clifton and Belbrook and Spring Valley, they're all on board?
Yeah, all the participating jurisdictions, uh, need resolutions of support. Um, and again, uh, the hope is that, uh, through this joint application, we would have, uh, funding awarded to, for all those various projects. And again, those are detailed in your agenda report.
Good. I've been a, a, a very firm proponent about pedestrian safety around town and this is excellent, so I can support this hands down.
The folks in the southwestern portion of our community, an area that's growing rapidly, um, from a pedestrian standpoint are, are pretty isolated. And with the growing commercial interest along progress, we've identified years ago that this was a need. Um, even students that walk over to Central Middle School, that walk, you know, literally down, down Second, um, this is a longstanding concern and, and we've known that we needed to widen the bridge. It's not a financial option for us. So a program like this is a, a real advantageous opportunity to address both vehicular traffic issues as well as the bike and pedestrian issues.
Just one more question, Mr. President. Now, will this have a, a cage around it? So, you know, can you throw anything over?
Yeah, there are some standards. I don't, I don't know what the specifics of the specifications, but there are some standards that ODOT requires. I was talking with the engineer today. Uh, one of the things that would be done as part of this, they would actually replace the entire deck in order to widen it because under ODOT's new standards, they have a, a taller bridge deck to accommodate higher profile vehicles. Uh, we've all seen some of the videos of some of the trucks that get stuck under these. So the, the modern standards are a lot higher. So this is, this would simultaneously address an, an underlying, if you will, pardon the pun, issue with that, with that overpass because it's an older overpass, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Any other questions for the city manager?
Yeah, the roadside path, is that going to be just, um, taken away from parking on the particular roadway or is that?
So I, you know, we're looking at, with, short of, of, of paving new pathway, part of what we want to do are, it's, it's employing the complete streets model where we're, you're sharing some of the roadway with, with bike trails. So you have a combination of different facilities that, that would, um, allow us to get that connection through those neighborhoods. So, uh, you're sharing the roadway, whether you're taking any parking away and certainly over the bridge, you're, you're actually creating, you're creating, you know, new space for, for the pathway.
Thank you.
Good. You were interested in Colorado Drive, right?
Yeah.
Right? What's going to be happening on Colorado?
Yeah, I guess more on that aspect.
Because I think what you said was that's, we're looking to make a, a connection there from the bike, bike path.
Yeah, and I, I didn't have an opportunity to point out, uh, Brian shared with me, I can pass this down around. This, this gives you sort of a, a, he's put together a, uh, a, a map basically of what that looks like. So it, again, connects those trail systems. Uh, and one of the things we know, you know, there, there will be additional commercial development off of Second Street in progress in that immediate vicinity. Um, it's happening. There are, you know, conversations underway that the traffic will get worse there. So we're trying to stay a step or two ahead and begin to address some of these issues before the traffic is, is worse than it is today and we can manage additional growth out there. The demand to be next to 35 is not going to change. That's just, you know, part and parcel to, uh, economic development today, uh, whether it's commercial, industrial, even institutional, they want to be near large roadways. They want the visibility and accessibility and that's, you know, a prime corridor for us. So we know the traffic, the demand to be out there is going to continue to be high and the traffic's going to increase, so.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions for the city manager?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Fortchner. I know you put a lot of work into this. We've talked about it before and I just wanted to thank you for looking into this program and for getting.
Thank you.
There's a lot of moving pieces, I know, so thank you.
All right, with no other comments or questions, I'll ask for a motion to support the city's participation in the raise grant application as an emergency.
So moved as an emergency?
Moved by the mayor as an emergency. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Any other, um, comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brayden?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item under New Businesses Resolution 2021- letter DD, also titled "An Emergency." This is authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 896 Louise Drive to the Schreiner Building Company LLC and declaring it a emergency. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, sir. In response to council's expectation that unused city-owned property be made available for private purchase, staff has been marketing a buildable parcel, again, located at 896 Louise Drive. The city acquired the property as a result of tax foreclosure in 2014. We've been maintaining the property since then. With the hot residential market in Xenia, there's been renewed interest in infill properties for new-built homes, and we actually, we like that, that these vacant parcels could be built on. So as a result, the city's received several offers, and we've been negotiating through our real estate agent to sell this particular property. The highest and best offer was submitted by David Schreiner with Schreiner Building Company LLC with a bid of $22,505. Their intent is to build a single-family home on the site pending council's approval of the sale. Staff's recommending council approve Resolution 2021- DD to authorize the sale, and we're endorsing a request by the purchaser to expedite this, so we're asking this be done as an emergency. Their purpose is that they have a project in that immediate vicinity. They'd like to be able to transition that construction crew as soon as is practical, so if they don't have to completely demobilize, that helps their bottom line, and we certainly have nothing against that. So we're recommending council authorize this as an emergency to allow us to sell the property.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to authorize the sale?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Scrivens. So we have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any further discussion regarding the sale of property?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
As Chairman of the Property Management Committee for the city of Xenia, we discussed this in depth, and for us to get $22,500 for a building lot in Xenia, we'll go take the money. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Branum?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item is an administrative motion. This is reappointing two members of the Board for Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities. We have two members on that board whose terms are due to expire on July 31st of this month. Both gentlemen, Mr. Nelson King and Mr. Tom McCarthy, have expressed their desire to be reappointed to a four-year term that would expire July 31st of '25. It should be noted that Mr. King was originally appointed in November of 2016, and Mr. McCarthy has been appointed since January 2018, and both have served consistently during that time. Mr. King currently manages the Bloom with Xenia Adopt a Spot Program. That's a volunteer program that we have in the city for beautification, and every year, he serves as a bracket representative for the Tree Committee. So he actually goes to several meetings a month. He is actively involved in Arbor Day and fundraising activities. Mr. McCarthy is currently serving as the Board's Vice Chair. So at this time, I will make a motion to reappoint Mr. King and Mr. McCarthy to two four-year term, I'm sorry, to a four-year term expiring July 31st of '25. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the Mayor. Any discussion regarding bracket? Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Branum?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, and thank you to those two gentlemen for their continued service to the community. Our next item is an administration motion approving the schedule of bills in the amount of $385,194. Mr. Duke, anything else for us tonight?
I have nothing specifically to reference on the bills tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Do we have a motion to pay the bills? Moved by Councilman Scrivens? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branum. Further discussion or questions regarding the schedule of bills for tonight?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Finance Director. I see that we, page two, I'm sorry, page four, Jones Fish Hatcher. We stocked Shawnee Pond. Is that, is that that expense? $3,200, $3,250?
Yeah, I would defer to the City Manager on that one. Yeah, we do that annually, spring summertime. That is not a naturally-fed body, and so we restock that. There are some fish that will eat the smaller fish, and so we restock with gill and perch and things. And I would add, in commenting on that, that we have a lot of folks who are abusing our local regulations on fishing there.
Catch and release?
It's supposed to be catch and release. You're not supposed to use any netting, anything like that, and we have some regular abusers down there, which is really unfortunate. And we, you know, here's $200 to put fish in there, and we have people that are poaching fish to use as bait in larger bodies of water, and that's really unfortunate.
Who would enforce that? Is that our enforcement or OD and R?
It's in our criminal code. I just had a discussion with the Law Director a week or two ago, and we are likely to come back to council with some recommendations on some changes to some of the code as it applies to the parks. We are trying to reinvest in our park system and to make amenities available. We want to protect those expenditures and use of public funds and those amenities, and so. But I'll tell you, you know, stopping poaching of fish at Shawnee Park is not the police division's top priority. So when folks see it, if they can report it, we'd like to be able to address it. And frankly, it's not about getting people in trouble. We just don't want people to do it. It's a real travesty when you walk down there and you see a pile of dead fish along the walkway. There's no excuse for that, so. Sorry, that was much more than you wanted, but.
Thank you, sir. That was clear. And just one more, Mr. President. Page seven, Mr. Finance Director, the second item, third item. June porta toilet service. Who are these porta jocks? Didn't see them.
I can answer that. I think this one specifically for Lexington Park, I think we've had them delivered there. We have porta jocks now that we have put in Lexington Park. I think we've kept them on at Xenia Station. I don't think the ones we gave.
They haven't been delivered yet. I know it's, it has been open, but I'm not sure if they've been delivered yet. There's one at Xenia Station.
Yeah.
There hasn't been one at the park.
So that was my question. The comments are.
We actually, of our 14 parks, we only have restroom facilities at two parks, at Shawnee and at Xenia Station, because those are community parks that we, you know, we have larger crowds. So where there's been some demand, in particular at Lexington, because we have the neighborhood garden program, the garden plot program, at the request of council, we've ordered one for there, which I think is what this expenditure is. But we also, we retained one at Xenia Station because there are times where we lock the building down, and people still use the trails after dark, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Finance Director.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Duke? Can I get a roll call, Mr. Duke, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Branum?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next is our, on our agenda is the Appointed Officials Report. At this time, we'll start with Mr. Finance Director.
I have nothing else for you this evening.
Thank you. Anything for Mr. Duke at this time?
Just glad to have him back on his chair. Place don't run the same without you. It's good to work at home, but we like to see your face in the place.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for being so resilient and getting back here on the double, so we appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Appreciate that. Anything else for Mr. Duke? All right, thank you. All right, next, we'll go to our Law Director. Madam Law Director?
Yes, I emailed you all yesterday. As you know, you've had the report from the Charter Review Commission, and our window to take action to get anything before the voters in November is closing. We have until September 3rd to get any proposed amendments to the Board of Elections for placement on the ballot. To follow the regular ordinance process, first reading, second reading, 30 days effective, you would really have to introduce something tonight. Now, there is no prohibition against us doing an emergency ordinance to put things on the agenda. That is an option, whether we do a regular or an emergency. By the Ohio Constitution, a vote of five members of council is required to put anything before the voters. The one discussion that we did have, I think there was still more discussion that was warranted on the proposed amendments to the election, Article 11, the election chapter. So what I emailed you yesterday, and I presented you hard copies this evening, is the proposed charter amendments except for Article 11. What I have written and presented you removes any proposed amendments from Charter 11, or, excuse me, Article 11. Article 11 would remain as it currently is in the charter with no changes. To remove 11 also means we need to remove Article 12 because the current Article 11 says that the state law regarding initiative and referendum is to apply. So that would conflict with the proposed changes to Article 11. And then the only other change I made was to remove the last sentence of Section 508 in the proposed amendments as that referenced the proposed new Article 11. So I do have this for you tonight. I apologize. I know it's, everything I give you is just a novel anymore. We are not required to have the proposed amendments on the ballot verbatim. I think the Board of Elections would kill us if we tried to do that. That ballot would be pages and pages and pages. We do, however, have to provide at least a summary, a digest, of what changes we're proposing. So that's what I tried to do for you. Section 2 is the language as it would actually appear on the ballot if you would decide to introduce this this evening. One of the requirements that's placed on the Board of Elections is that they have a complete copy showing all the proposed changes verbatim at every polling place. So to meet that, I prepared the Exhibit A, which is basically the proposed amendments from the Charter Review Commission minus Article 11 and Article 12. Those two articles, no changes are proposed. They would remain exactly as written. So council really has three options this evening. You can introduce this ordinance this evening and then vote on it either on the 22nd or at a special meeting. As long as we get it done, that the ordinance is going to be effective for that September 3rd deadline. The other thing we can do, if you don't want to introduce this tonight, if you want to have a little more discussion, we can do any ordinance to place charter amendments on the ballot as an emergency. There's no prohibition for that. That would give us until August, really the second meeting in August, if we needed it to discuss. Your third option would be to push any proposed charter amendments, not put them on the agenda, or, excuse me, on the ballot for this November. I will tell you, if you choose that route, we will not be able to get anything before the voters before 2023. There is no regular municipal election in 2020. ORC 350501 defines a regular municipal election as the election that occurs on the Tuesday in November of odd years. So there's no chance of getting it before the voters next year unless the city would choose to pay for a special election. That's still an option. I just want you to know, if we choose not to present anything in 2021, we won't be able to do so until 2023. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we'd love to hear some comments about what you'd like to do.
All right, at this time, thank you, Madam Law Director. At this time, I'll open the floor for council with any questions they have for Ms. Fisher.
Thinking and processing.
Mr. President? You should ask for the floor.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Scrivens.
Number one, I'd like to compliment the Law Director on her yeoman's work to produce this document. This document will get community support. I don't think it'll get support this election. So I'm gonna be moving to table this until, what, 2020?
It would be 2023. And you wouldn't have to actually formally table it. It's not formally on your agenda this evening. So as long as it doesn't get introduced, it doesn't have to be tabled.
All right. Well, that's the position I'm gonna take, Mr. President. I don't think that we've had enough time to deliberate on this and to get a group think on where we should go. And I don't want this, I don't want this work to go down in flames on a ballot with has four of us on the ballot. This will become a political document, and it's not. It's our actual operating document. So I don't want this to get construed with politics. So with that, I would not be voting for anything to put it on the ballot this time around, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, that's disheartening news that we can't do it during the two elections.
You could, but you would have to pay for a special election. And I don't, I don't know when the last time we did. I know they're pretty costly.
Yeah, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $30,000 for the special election. Now, what you don't know is what somebody else may want to put on the ballot. And so, you know, there's always the possibility that somebody else may be going to the ballot as well, and that the costs would be split and shared, and that it wouldn't be, you know, a huge expense. So it's kind of difficult to know exactly what that ballot's gonna look like in May of 2022 or November. You know, so there's, well, I guess it wouldn't be those exact dates if it's a special election, but it's hard to know who may or may not go for something next year, but it would most likely be a lot more costly than going to a general election.
So, but there is going to be, in May and June, there is, I mean, there's the, there's the, there's the national items that'll be on there, like for the House of Representatives and things like that, right? So what you're saying, for us to participate as a municipality, we would have to declare a special election to participate in that?
Yes. The Ohio Constitution states that it's to be put on for regular municipal elections. And that is defined under 350501B as the election in November of every other odd year. So anything other than that, we would, you know, there's an option. Maybe we can split the cost, but that is something we would end up having to pay for.
Because if we wait till 2023, we're back in the same boat where there's an election cycle happening. I'm sorry? In 2023, there would be people back on the ballot again, and it'd be another election cycle.
You want three on the ballot?
I understand. No, I understand. I don't want it to be a political document either. I just, I want it to be our charter. I just, I'm not ready to make any motions tonight. I want to process what was just said and revisit this.
I will do some homework with the Board of Elections and the County Auditor as well to see what those expenses might look like. I understand what the legislation is saying, but I don't know how that marries up with the actual fees because there are going to be other issues on the ballot. So I don't know what that actually means for us from a cost standpoint. So I'll follow up with them and see what that may look like. I'm sure they can give us an estimate.
Thank you.
And another option to consider, even if you wanted to shorten this down even more, I think, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but as far as staff, one of the biggest issues we saw for me as your legal counsel, I think the number one thing that I would like to see changed is Article 5. We are the only city in Ohio that does two readings on resolutions. That's crazy because resolutions are not matters of permanent nature. There shouldn't have to be two readings. Resolutions doing an immediate reading and vote, which is how every other city does it, would allow you to be awarding bids and doing things like that by resolution. bids and doing things like that by resolution. Our charter also states that resolutions and ordinances are interchangeable. And that just flies 100% in the face of state law, case law, and the Ohio Constitution. So even if you wanted to pick and choose, maybe just do Article 5, or Article 6, or Article 10, we can do that. As I said, there's nothing that prevents us from doing an emergency ordinance. That's not prohibited by the Constitution in any way. And we've got until August then if we wanted to do that.
Right. Well, that, that Article 5 drives us many times to having emergency resolutions over and over and over again, right?
All right. So I would like to, for, for those that are watching or that are here right now, what we're discussing is the, the, just as we have a constitution in the United States, we have a charter. That's basically the City of Xenia's constitution. It is comprised of a lot of articles that we follow as a city. And those changes and recommendations can only be changed by the voters. We had a committee comprised of citizens, and it was actually citizens-led. It was not council-led, although we did have a mayor and a member of the council that sat in on those discussions. They came to us a few months ago with recommendations to make changes to our city charter. The last time charter changes were made in our city was in 1998, if I believe that's correct. Yeah. So what we were looking at is potential to put this on the ballot in November. However, just with any change, there's always discussion, and not everybody is on board with it. So we found that out at our last meeting. And so our Law Director has tried to make some modifications to appease. And so what I'm hearing from one council member is to wait. But what I'm also hearing is we still have at least one more meeting or two that we could put this.
If, if council was willing to consider an emergency ordinance, again, emergency ordinance is under our charter, take a vote of five. Under the state constitution, it takes a vote of five. There's no prohibition in the state constitution that you can't do charter amendments by emergency ordinance. So that would still leave us the second meeting in July and both meetings in August, if there are any articles that you would want to present to the voters in November.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we'll come, we'll come back next meeting and further discuss it. All right, thank you. And in the meantime, who can find out regarding Board of Elections as far as the costs and?
Ryan.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
You're gonna do that?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, Dinesh, as I understand, we can bring portions of the recommended language. We cannot modify the language that was per the state constitution. We do not have the right to modify a language that's been presented to us by.
It's actually per our charter. When the voters enacted section, that section creating the Charter Review Commission, council can decide which amendments to present to the voters, but council cannot change or modify the recommendations of the Charter Review Commission. So it's up to you to decide which changes you want the voters to vote on and which you don't.
But we, we do have the power on the council to modify the structure of the charter. That's more of a housekeeping, I think, per the charter. We can do that without, that doesn't change the, the content of the charter. Is that correct?
What do you mean by structure?
There's, there's a number of things that we did in the proposal that really helped us reorganize.
I, I don't think we can do that without a vote.
No, we need a vote, but, but.
Yes. If, if we, a lot of the changes we made were housekeeping. We had a lot of things that related to one subject that were kind of scattered throughout, and we tried to gather those. But we were changing section numbers. We were moving things from this article to another article. And I think we'd have to have the, the voters approve that to be able to do it.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions for the Law Director? All right. Do you have anything else for us tonight other than?
If anyone has between this meeting and the next, if you have questions, you want to discuss any of that, email me. You all have my cell phone number. You're welcome to call anytime.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is appointed official report from our City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a number of items tonight, update items. But I wanted to start first. I reached out to council via email today and I provided just a brief memo to you tonight. At your last regular session, council authorized the purchase of a replacement brush truck. We were under that approval. There was a not to exceed amount. As we went to put the purchase order in, we were made aware of the fact that there's been an increase in the expense for the portion related to Henderson. And we really can't move forward because council gave us a not to exceed amount. So what I, as I indicated in, in the email earlier today, what I would ask this evening is that council approve an administrative motion, just amending that not to exceed amount. The addition of, the additional expense is $4,019. And I've attached with this memo I provided tonight, the, the most current, the applicable quote. You'll note in there, they specifically reference increase in material commodity costs. So from the point that we got the original quote, processed that earlier this year through our system to recently here when they, they updated the, the quote total. So again, this is a competitive bid process. It's just gonna cost us a little bit more because the, you know, it's more for the, the actual business. So if, if council can accommodate and approve a motion seating to increase that not to exceed amount, we would be appreciative.
All right. Who would like to make that motion? Councilman Scrivens?
President, back in the old days, they used to call this a cost overrun. So it is what it is. And I'll go ahead and introduce this. We need the truck, and that's it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by the Vice President. Further discussion regarding the amendment. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ask President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brannan.
Aye.
Councilman Oshel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion K.
Thank you very much. What else do you have for us?
Yeah, a few other updates. First, we definitely want to put a huge shout out and thank you to all of the individuals, organizations that helped to fund and put on the Sunny Cab Fireworks Festival and our downtown block party. We had a smashing success last weekend. And I'm just really proud of the community, the Sunny Cab family, and many other businesses and individuals, families who donated resources to help that event. We had an enormous crowd that had really no issues, beautiful, blessed with beautiful weather. So we're really excited that that program was well received by the community. We're already talking about next year and how we continue to make the event even better. We want to let folks know, we've already had quite a few people reach out. Rotary is taking, accepting donations that they will bank toward next year's. We have to make a new commitment on the fireworks. So everybody's already said, yep, let's make a three-year commitment. We'll retain Rosy's for another three years. And of course, we're looking for any sponsorships. Folks who want to sponsor different activities for kids and families, we're certainly amenable to those. But again, I want to thank our staff members who spent a long day and evening that, that evening. I think Councilman Brannan joined us cleaning up at the park. I think we got out of there about 11:30 Friday night. So again, thanks to the, to all the folks who helped out. A lot of the churches, athletes in action, various other groups who had volunteered time to, to provide those activities for families. And it was really, really well received. So we're just very, very proud of that. Next, I've provided for you this evening a brief, a brief one-page document highlighting the schedule and plan of attack for the Neighborhood Night Out events. We'll reinstitute those for this year. We have two scheduled. I'm asking and strongly encouraging council members to come out to those events. It is a fantastic opportunity to be able to connect directly one-on-one with our constituents and just hear them out. We're taking a little different approach this year. We're doing a little healthier meal. We're working with One Bistro. Hot dogs are great. Chips are fantastic. Lemonade's really good, too. But we think a little healthier approach would be, would be good. And so we've gotten, all of the food materials are being donated through One Bistro. Our staff's gonna volunteer some time to put those things together. So we'll have a little bit of cost, but it'll be comparable to what we've spent in the past, and we'll have a much better, much healthier meal. So we'll have boxed, boxed meals that we'll give away during those events as well. We are going to infuse, take a little different approach and infuse public safety staff. We, we heard discussion tonight, we, you know, of concerns in terms of the relations, relationship with public safety. That's not who we are as a community. We have open policing. We have firefighter paramedics who are compassionate, officers who are compassionate about this community. We strongly want to encourage that dialogue. We want to relationship build. We need that community policing between our law enforcement folks as well as members of the community. So we'll have a, a strong presence. We want folks to understand what our public safety staff members do, have access to the equipment, ask questions. So we are gonna come out to these park locations. We'll bring a ladder truck out. We'll bring, bring law enforcement, you know, a full detail to be able to, to really connect with folks on, on our public safety services. So again, as, as in the past, we'll have other partners with those events. So please mark your calendars. Please make an effort to come out, both as council, and certainly we encourage the members of our public. We'll be doing more publicity on that as we get a little closer to those, those dates. I want to let council know that we have ongoing efforts related to community outreach for the Xenia Town Square redevelopment. As of this morning, we've had almost 1,500 surveys completed. I mean, I gotta be honest, that's just blown us away. And 77% of all folks who click on that link end up completing those surveys. So that's just an extraordinary effort on behalf of the public. And we've gotten some fantastic feedback, really getting some direction from the community as to what they'd like to see with Xenia Town Square. In addition to the digital efforts, we've done four interactive events or, or community meetings, did a presentation with Xenia Rotary. Had a couple dozen participants there. We've done sessions at the Senior Center, at the Historic Society Library. We're getting about a dozen folks a piece at each of those, but it's been reported to me, a really good distribution of individuals from around the city, across sections of dynamics in terms of age and, and financial disposition and so forth. So really good feedback. We are planning right now to, about 1,000 of those 1,500 survey participants, we're willing to give their email, and we're open to receiving additional information. So we're gonna reach out to those folks and extend an invitation to bring them into one or two additional community feedback sessions that we are looking to host. And we're looking to host those on July 20th and July 28th. The details are still being worked out exactly where.
What were those dates again?
July 20th and July 28th. And again, I don't have the details with me right now as to where that will be. So those will be open to anybody in the public, but we're sending specific invitations to those survey participants to get even more feedback from them. We're hoping that with those, that council would agree that we've, we've done a pretty good job of getting community feedback. So we'll start to wind that process down and then fully transition into that planning process. So again, really, really good interactive community feedback, really, generally very positive. Folks are rightfully concerned and invested. They want to see a good, a good series of projects there. But generally, some pretty positive support and some really good ideas in what, what they think should happen there. So. Also, I want to let council know that the state has finally approved legislation related to the American Rescue Plan Act. In its infinite wisdom, the legislature and the governor have signed off on a plan that is going to take the money that, the monies that were allotted for non-entitlement cities and, and villages, they're gonna split that money in half and give half of that money to townships. So we were told that we were getting about $5.3 million. After the state legislature's action, that's now $2.8 million. That's still a lot of money, but that drastically changes a lot of the conversations that we've been having with council about the possible uses of these funds. This is really disappointing. I just want to point out, the state's getting between $5 and $6 billion. That's the state. That's not inclusive of direct entitlements of large cities like Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, as well as some others like Fairborn, Middletown, Kettering. They're direct entitlements. So their, their numbers are locked in by the Congressional Act. There was another $844 million that was allocated to municipalities, cities and villages. That's the money that we were supposed to get. The state, because the federal government did not include an allocation directly for townships, instead of taking the state's $5.6 billion, they're taking half of the $844 million that we were supposed to get. That's extraordinarily disappointing. Extraordinarily disappointing. And I would encourage folks to let their, their state elected leaders know that we're not real happy with that. So it is what it is. The state has just opened the portal to begin requesting the funds. Finance Director, I've started to look at this, and as you would expect with federal programs, the, the strings and red tape and minutia is pretty significant. So we're reviewing that to make sure we'll be fully compliant. I would imagine the next couple of weeks, we'll probably receive that money. We'll get half this year, half next year. Don't spend it all in one place. It won't take you too long to spend it. So again, we'll be coming back with, to council once we get a better understanding of when we get that money and exactly how we think we can spend it. We've done some additional research, participated in some additional webinars hosted by state agencies. I'm really more inclined to think right now that we're, we're gonna be more limited than we thought in terms of use of those dollars. Everything that we will need to do, we will need to justify as it relates to COVID incidences. And I think that's gonna be pretty difficult for some of the things like infrastructure projects, to be very honest. So give us some time to evaluate that. We'll come back, you know, probably the next month or so and have some more conversation with council about how you'd like to proceed with those resources. Two more small items, just real quickly. I reached out to the members of council that serve on the Public Service Utility Committee. You may not have had a chance to see that email today. I'm hoping that July 15th will still work for your first meeting. If that does not work, please see me afterward. But we'll, we'll try to publish an agenda soon for that meeting. And then finally, I just want to let council know that you had approved us to work with Palmer Energy, our aggregation consultant partner, to go out and rebid for gas aggregation. We have up until November to lock in a new agreement. So there's no rush, but we wanted to have plenty of time. We've not actually exercised that yet. We don't think the market has reached sort of the opportune time. So we're kicking the can down the road a little bit because we think we'd get a little better, a little bit better deal if we wait a little longer. Once we do lock that in, I will let you know. But again, we're trying to get the best possible value for our consumers. So with that, I'll be quiet and entertain any questions. If not, we'll get out of here.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? I also would like to commend staff and the volunteers for the, the festival last Friday. I, that's the most people I've seen downtown in ages. And I, everybody seemed very appreciative of the event. And I'd like to thank the, those volunteers that worked tirelessly for that event. And again, it's, it's being the neighborhood and it's being the city hospitality, and I, I really enjoyed that. So moving on is reports from boards and commissions. Our first report is Board of Zoning Appeals chaired by Mayor Mays.
Thank you, sir. BZA met on June 28th to hear an administrative appeal to overturn the planning and zoning's approval of a conditional use to allow Community Steam Academy, a public K-5 charter school, to rehabilitate, expand, occupy a vacant former board of education and school building located at 578 East Market Street. The administrative appeal was denied, which means the conditional use approval was upheld. And that is all we met about.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone have anything for the mayor regarding BZA? All right, thank you, Mayor. Next is Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's chaired by Councilman Brannan.
Yeah. PCC met on July 1st to consider conditional use to allow campground consisting of two yurts and a camping trailer available to guests and property owner slash occupants for recreational and vacation purposes upon annexation of the property into the City of Xenia, followed by Robert Adamson, for the property located at 800 Hedges Road, which was approved. He noted a second item, which noted there was a second item on the agenda, but it was requested that it would be moved to.
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything for Councilman Brannan regarding planning and zoning? Do you have an opening now, right, maybe?
Yes, I do have one, one opening, Mr. Matt Bennett. We appreciate his dedication to our city and dedication of Planning and Zoning Commission. That spot is open.
All right, thank you. So if you're interested in serving Planning and Zoning Commission, great commission meets fairly regularly, and it's probably one of our more active committees. Thank you for chairing that. Send your request or your desire to our city clerk, Ian Johnson, at ci.zenia.oh.us. And I'm sure we can get that on the government channel as well. All right, moving on to council comments. I'll start with Councilman Brannan. Do you have anything else for us tonight?
Just want to say thank you to city staff for the event. There was great turnout. It was awesome. Thanks to Public Service Department, Fire Department, Police Department. Everybody was there. Everybody was involved. Everybody's engaged. CAB staff, of course. It was a great event. I just want to say that we're hearing everybody loud and clear with everybody's concerns about our parks. I just want to remind everybody, there's 13 parks, which most people do not realize that City of Xenia has 13 parks. So remember to also go and explore the other parks and realize that maybe the park that's in your neighborhood is not as bad as what you think it is. There is definitely some parks that have definitely been neglected over the years because there's not enough money in the pot. I really wish that we could have a huge influx of money that could go to our parks. Definitely, I've noticed, and I think everybody else has noticed, that the county has stepped up their parks. It stinks because it's not like we can dictate where the county parks are. And it's not that we can say, hey, why don't you come to our park and put some money in, into that particular area. But I just want to say it is noted, we're, we're hearing your concerns and looking forward to working with the community to, to come up with a solution.
All right, thanks, Councilman Brannan. Councilman Oshel?
Yeah, just a couple, once again, kudos to everybody for the, for the fireworks. I just want to say thanks to the Xenia High School football team that came out Saturday morning to come clean up Shawnee Park. And it was great. We had two groups down there trying to clean up the same. We had two groups down there trying to clean up at the same time, and better to have too many people and not enough, and we were able to gather the group from Bridges of Hope that goes out, cleans up the town on Saturday morning, so we got them re-vector to Xenia Town Square, and so we were able to clean up a lot more of the city on Saturday. But I just really want to tell the school, the school district, thanks for sending the group over to doing that, because that was, that was really helpful. I just, and I'm really sorry that the group that came and brought their concerns have left at this time, because I was hoping that, and I get it, the council meetings are long, and, but I really wish they could have stuck around to hear some more comments there. I just make one comment about Lexington Park. You know, we did hear from Charles Green Jr. and Robert Moore at the council meeting back in April. We've had multiple contacts with them, we had the city councils going out to the park. The city's put together an initial draft proposal for us, for some improvements with that, and we also pursued trying to get a national park grant, and based upon what the national park personnel had told us, and we went to some meetings and asked the city to pursue that, that we were a prime candidate for some of that grant, and unfortunately, they had given us erroneous information nationwide, so we weren't able to pursue that. But there are some other grants to do, and understand the CARES Act money is reduced, but there's still some available, so I would encourage us at councils, we take a look at that, that, we take a look at the proposal the city had for Lexington, and I think we still need to have a forum over at the park and get that announced. We talked about that at our Braca committee, about getting some, some public input, you know, we've had, we've had the council discussing this, we haven't had a chance to get back to the community and have a discussion. So I just would recommend to the staff that we do pick an evening here in July, and we talked about the fact that we can reach out to folks in that community, let them know we're going to do that, let's go to the park and sit down with them and discuss some of the, some of the concepts. Tonight, we heard some more concepts about some other things that weren't on that initial plan, but I think we need to, we need to continue to work on that. In terms of the policing, so I think there's, there's two sides to this. One is, out of those 50 traffic stops, 10% of the folks that were stopped had an outstanding warrant. And we don't want people in our city to think that they can ignore the municipal courts, and that it's okay to just keep pressing on with life and ignore the courts, because to have an outstanding warrant means you had to have a case brought against you, you had to go to the court, and the court had to either issue a warrant for your arrest coming out of that situation, because you've not been participating in the direction of the courts. So, no, I'm glad, I'm shocked, that just from random traffic stops, 10% of the people that were stopped had a warrant for their arrest. That's not, I mean, that's, that's a sad commentary, but it also says that those folks need to be off the street, okay? You need to, you need to address your issues with the court system. 10% of the folks that stopped had, had illegal drugs, okay? And I hear some people say that, well, you know, it's only a $1,000 street value. Well, I don't care if it was, what the value of that was, okay? Because as you're participating and purchasing and using illegal drugs, you're sustaining the drug trafficking in our city, in our city, and it has a cancer in our city, okay? And, and some people may think a thousand bucks isn't very much, well, there's a lot of families that are going with the utilities being shut off, and going without food, and getting evicted, and those dollars could, could be used in your families to go to those kind of places. Because I see families all the time in our city that are going without. So if people think, I got plenty of money and I can spend it on drugs and do that, well, there's a lot better things for you to be doing with your money personally. And second, when you, when you make those purchases, you are sustaining the drug trade in our city, and it is a cancer, and it's killing people. We just shut that down, that house on Second Street, part of what was going on is, I mean, I don't know how many runs we had where we had people that were in a life-threatening crises, and we had people that were dying in there from drug overdoses, okay? So, so yeah, this is something we need to be concerned about. And 5% of the folks that saw had illegal weapons, okay? So what are you planning on doing with an illegal weapon in your vehicle, okay? Well, nothing good. And unfortunately, it's, it's, yeah, there's risk to our law enforcement, but the primary risk is to the rest of the citizens of the city, okay? Because either some kids are going to get a hold of that and do something they shouldn't be doing with it, which we've seen happen multiple times, or people are going to get angry with somebody else and use it in a way it shouldn't be used, okay? So those, those are all serious things, and, and as this task force went and did these traffic stops, it wasn't just here, and once again, as we heard, we weren't, weren't targeting the east end of town. Roughly, you know, about 14% of the stops were in the east end, but the rest of these things happened all through our community, okay? So, so first off, I know there's some statements saying, hey, we feel like we're being targeted in the community. We ask, and we ask our police to go and start cracking down on the drug trade and illegal things that are going on in our city, and that's going to, that needs to continue, okay? That, that has to happen. Now, if, if law enforcement are being inappropriate in those, in those connections, okay, no, we should never allow that to happen or allow that to continue. So once again, I'm sorry folks out here, you know, Captain Lane is making himself available, but if you, if you have a chance to talk this over with Captain Lane in terms of his patrolman, and you don't feel like you're getting a good answer, then come see us, right? Because, because the police force is, at the end of the day, is accountable to this council, okay? So if, if you're, if you're concerned that as you interact with, with Captain Lane there, and I'm just telling you, I know, I've known him for forever, and things are going on that should not be going on in the city, we need to put a stop to that, all right? I don't believe they are, but if they are, let's go address that. Do you have our DPNL guy, what are we, AES now, is that right? Oh, I saw you over there, okay. We had a power outage on Market Street last month.
West or east?
What?
East.
East. And multiple families there lost all their food, because it was multiple days it was out. So they've had to go petition to Job and Family Services, there's a program that will allow them to have the food restored, but they've been told by Job and Family Services until that's certified by DPNL that there actually was an outage, they will not restore the food. So they're, they're waiting on that. And I have two families that I've gone ahead and paid them for their, for their loss pending this, and my understanding is that, so I'm not blaming you guys, but I'm just saying, there's something going on, that there's a disconnect there. So if you, if you could check and find out if you guys have had a request from Job and Family Services about that and follow up with it, I'd appreciate that, because there's, there are a lot of folks that were just struggling from the food perspective, yeah. And the only other thing I'd say is, there's a, right petition is one of our fundamental rights as Americans, and we, we're here tonight, we get a chance to come and petition the city council, that's a wonderful thing. We're having an election this fall, and we do that through a petition process. So to celebrate that, a number of us who are running for this fall are going to have a petition signing party at the, at the Coffee Hub next door, the folks there next door said they were going to host it. We're not offering any coffee, because there's no gratuities, you can buy your own, but feel free to invite, but I'm not buying your coffee when you show up. But that's going to be next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, from 5:00 to 7:00. And anybody else that, that is planning on running and would like to get some petitions signed, bring, bring your petitions. Listen, we, we want to have an open discussion amongst our community, and we want to encourage as many people as we can to participate in our, in our process. So we'll have some tables set up, and if you've never done this before, bring your petition, we'll have the law director's pamphlet that she put out to tell us how to get that filled out properly, thank you. We'll have a list of all the folks in the city that are actually electors, to make sure that they're, they're getting their names signed right, and so, and if you, if you haven't thought about this, you've been thinking about running for council, this is a good first step to be able to do that. So just want to let you know that's going to be going on next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday evening over coffee, I hope it's going to be a fun time, and encourage anybody who wants to come and get some petitions signed. Once again, that just allows you to have your name on the ballot to move forward. We want to encourage as many people who would like to do that as, as possible, so. Yeah, that's, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Councilman Herschel. Councilwoman Dean, what do you have tonight?
I just want to say thank you to the Xenia city staff for everything they did for the July 2nd event, that was a lot of fun. I can't wait for the next event, so, that's all.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank everyone who was involved in any way whatsoever with the, with the red, white, and blue, what I call the red, white, and kaboom block party, because after we had the block party, then we had the kabooms. So everyone, whether or not you, you set up, tore down, vend it, bought, sold, traded, it was a good thing to be together again, in person, in Xenia, Ohio. Can't beat it. I also like to acknowledge that receipt of an email from a former councilman, Mr. Dennis Probst, who lives in the downtown area, and he said that we have a homeless problem in Xenia. Well, that's not new, we have a homeless problem in America, and we have a number of vacant units in Xenia that actually need people in them. I just can't see for the life of me why we can't match up property owners who have vacancies and give some type of supplement to get these people off the street and into a dwelling. I mean, these are Americans, these are our brothers and sisters, our friends and our neighbors. Just my position. So maybe we can do something, maybe we can't. Interesting still seeing this light out here at the corner of East Main and White Main get back up to speed, I see people taking their chances, and oncoming traffic, they don't know whether to light a match or step on the pedal, and somebody's going to get whacked out here, I guarantee you. And then let me get on my soapbox about our streets and curbs. I hear you on Country Club Drive, I hear you, I thank you for your calls. I hear you on North Patton Street, stopped me while I was riding my bicycle. I hear you on East Third Street, which is a washboard, which has to be of the PCI, that has to be one of the worst streets, but it's less travel. So we're trying to get to mostly traveled streets first, our orders, we've gotten them, so I can't ask you to be patient any longer, because you've been patient, so we just have to endure the process, so just ask you to hang in there. Wanted to say that we had a council meeting before Juneteenth and didn't get a chance to say anything about that. Juneteenth has been celebrated in the black community since I can remember. I didn't know anything about Juneteenth until I moved from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania to Houston, Texas in 1981, and then in '82, it really got kicked off in Texas, which is where General Granger came. So I'd just like to say for the Juneteenth Freedom Day that we're now going to be celebrating, celebrate it with everybody, everybody's free in America. Celebrate freedom on Juneteenth, then we can celebrate independence on Independence Day. So we're free and independent, let's celebrate that. I mean, where else in the world can we celebrate freedom and independence? Not too many, I guarantee you. And I'd just like to say that, that the former minorities who had the privilege of serving on this council, I recognize them for Juneteenth, that would be former council, former commissioner and mayor James T. Henry, Moon Mullins, Fred Hall III, Vernon Dillon, Dr. Lee G. Esprit, Dr. Eric Winston, Dr. Edgar Wallace, and former mayor Marcia Bellis. So we want to thank them for their service, and we want to recognize them as being pioneers in city government here in Xenia. So with that, Mr. President, I have one final thing, and that is, I want to extend condolences to Ms. Elizabeth Scrivens and her daughter, Morgan Scrivens, both are RN Critical Care nurses in Huntsville, Alabama, and they happen to be the spouse and the daughter of my cousin, Dan Scrivens, who was formerly here in Xenia, we inducted him into the Xenia Athletic Hall of Fame, I believe, was not in '20, but in '19, and he's now deceased. He had a apparent heart attack, he was out on, on, I thought it would be Lake Gunnersville, because that's where you can catch the lunkers, but he was on Scottsboro Lake, his wife said, and he had gotten a new Ranger boat, and you never go fishing alone, you never do a whole lot of things that we do alone, you always have to have somebody where you can get in touch with. Well, he apparently suffered a fatal MI, and he didn't get back in touch with his wife, so her being who she is, she called the, the authorities to go take a look, and coming to find out, when they saw him, he was slumped over in, in the sea, and they couldn't revive him, so Dan Scrivens will be in Huntsville here Saturday, and we'll see you home. With that, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Next is Vice President Dean.
Thanks, I just really enjoyed the fireworks and the whole Fourth of July celebration, and I thank everyone who participated, so that's all I have.
Was it because it was on your birthday?
Oh, it was his birthday! Oh!
Thank you very much. I'm going to do things a little different tonight, I'm going to speak, and then I'm going to let the mayor actually close out tonight, okay? So just to thank everyone that watched tonight, and those that came tonight and spoke, we haven't had that much audience participation in quite a while, so, and that's a good thing, that people are always welcome to come to our community, and even if you are not a Xenia resident, you can come to the podium and, and address your concerns. Keep in mind, we're aware of the issues we have in our community, because there are so many needs in our community and in America, and, but part of our issue is funding, and we just have to do the best we can with what we have, and we're always looking as a council and city to grow our revenue without raising taxes. So we're aware our parks have needs, but as Councilman Branham said, we have 13 parks in our community, as well as county parks, so visit the parks that we have, and visit the bike trails. We have people from all over that come to our community and experience the thrill of riding on, on the bike trails in a safe environment. Again, also like to thank everyone that participated in the Community Days, or I'm sorry, not community, but the Red Light and Boom Festival that we just had Friday, that was wonderful, and the freedoms that we have to celebrate Independence Day in the United States, what an honor that is. And just to let, reminder to council, this month, I would like to try to conduct the performance evaluations for our appointed officials, so if you have an opportunity to drop that in my mailbox, I'd like to try to get those done here in the next couple of weeks. And at this time, I am going to turn the table over to the mayor and let her close us out. Thank you.
On the 26th of June, I had an opportunity to welcome folks, Rick Peralos, the commissioner, has a vintage baseball game where he does several games with the Iron Horses and with them, and also raise awareness for food security for vets. So it was a great event, and what was neat about this year, he's done it throughout the county, but he did it here in Xenia at the Athletes in Action campus, and so very excited to have them here and to spend some time with them. Of course, everybody was mentioned on the 2nd, our, our festival, both the Red, White, and Blue Block Party and the, and the fireworks, it was an amazing evening. I specifically want to thank Christina Schaefer and Ryan Maker and the work that they've done, and spent a lot of time with them, and just watched their plans come together. I won't lie, I got a little emotional with some of the decorations in the downtown and the building there on the corner, and then at the park with the lights and the pavilion, and it just, it was outstanding, it was absolutely beautiful. Really excited to have Colonel Young folks come out and represent our National Memorial there, and AIA, the YMCA, Fox's, the Friends of Xenia Station, it was AHOPE, Emmanuel, Baptist, New Community and Liberty Worship that came out and provided some of the games and the activities for the kids, and then a lot of the businesses, the Route 68 Vintage Toys, Becky with the lunchbox and the, and the flower shop, they, they all just did extra things to make it special, and it was just so apparent, there were so many people that were here. I wanted to mention Xavier and Audrey, they are two National Honor Society students that came out, they walked around in costume, I know Wes and I had a couple hours, three or five with them, I believe. Cody and Tom spent some time with them as well in the, in the later evening, and just walking around and allowing kids to take pictures, and we did that with some of the shop owners too, and that was a lot of fun. So yeah, it was, it was an incredible evening, I was very honored, I was able to host the mayor from Beaver Creek and the mayor from Riverside for the fireworks, and I had been joking with them that it was time for them to come to Xenia to see how it's really supposed to be done. They were very, very excited and very impressed, and comment was, I've not seen fireworks like that before, so just, it was a really good evening, and of course, public safety and, and public service, just an incredible job, so thank you, City of Xenia, thank you to the staff, I know that's been said over and over, but we really can't thank you enough. I know that's been said over and over, but we really can't thank you enough. On the third, the next day, I had an opportunity to speak at the, the annual reunion of AXP, which is the Association of Ex-Pupils that are from O V C H and O S S O Home. They have a reunion. In fact, they, actually, we had an opportunity to talk to them beforehand, and they came out to the July 2nd festival and had a booth there to talk about some of the history of the home and the museum there. So they have a dinner on Saturday night. I was honored to be able to speak to them, be their keynote speaker for that evening. And I just, it was an incredible evening to meet some people there. Some people I knew. Couple that I knew grew up in the home there, couple that I didn't realize that grew up there, met one of the teachers that used to teach there. Just what a neat piece of our history. And if you have never been to the museum, you absolutely have to go. They are out there every week and, and want people to come and see it and want people to understand this incredible establishment, 1869, I believe is when it started. So it just, if you haven't done that, please do that. And then on July 4th, had an opportunity, the mayor of Fairborn invited us out to be in part of the parade in Fairborn. Again, another really fun event. So had an opportunity to participate in that and then also spend some time with Colonel Miller from the 88th, the commander out there, and just continue to build that relationship. Today, we had an outstanding meeting with Liberal Force University. Some leadership folks from out there came out to the city here, to this building, and just talking about how do we grow that relationship and how can we partner together and see each other succeed? So very excited about some opportunities that they presented to us. And I, I think that we're really poised to do some good things there. We mentioned the lunchbox, but I wanted to specifically congratulate Becky Hawks in the opening of the lunchbox, and I hope everybody's taken time to visit it. Also, congratulations to Mrs. Donna Soraga, our new Xenia Chamber President. Very exciting. And I think that is all for the notes that I had. Of course, as, as other council members have said, thank you to the folks who came out to speak tonight. Whether we are on the same page always, it may or may not be, but to have open dialogue, we just, that's how you grow in our community. To be able to sit down, to conversa, to have conversations. Mr. Smith and I were talking, we are neighbors, and we just live a few houses apart. We want to continue to talk and have good dialogue. I am proud of our Xenia police force, and I'm proud of the work that they do, but I'm also proud that they are always having, with the open door conversation. I know that's with Captain Lane, talking with chief today, chief person. How can we continue to have good relationships here in this city? So I'm, I'm very thankful for, for the willingness to talk and to at least lay that groundwork. So that is all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. We have no executive session scheduled for tonight, nor a work session. So at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.[1784.91]